Well, hey. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Commission meeting. We're glad that you're here with us today. I want to welcome everybody online, those on Facebook and YouTube, and all of you here in person. We're delighted that you're joining us today. When you walked in, we always encourage you to get a meeting agenda packet out of where you can follow along with the things that we're discussing here at the Commission. And if you're interested in any of the supporting docs that the Commissioners have access to as we're making decisions on each of these items, you can always access that at sedgewickcounty.org. We encourage you to do so. Okay. We've got a few things on the agenda today, a wonderful proclamation and some business items that we want to attend to. So let's get to work. We'll officially call this meeting to order for Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Jeff Isaacs, Riverlong Christian Church. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all of our Commissioners. Appreciate it. I see your faces all the time. You're up on a hall in our church that we pray for. And thank you to all those behind the scenes that do so much for our county. You guys are greatly appreciated as well. So let's pray. Father, thank you so much for being a good God, Lord. Even as we saw the sunrise this morning and the beautiful weather, thank you for your goodness and your faithfulness. Father, I pray right now that you would be in this place, Lord. I thank you for the men and women that serve this county. I pray that you would bless them, Lord, that you would give them strength and encouragement and wisdom as they lead out. And would you be glorified here today in this place? Father, thank you for being a good God. We love you, and we ask all this in the name of the One who saves, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with due routine and justice for all.
Pastor Jeff, thank you, sir, for being here. Give our best to all the great people over at Riverlong, please. Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Blubow.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. We have quite the busy day today, not with, not only with our BOCC meeting, but tonight, Sedgwick County, the City of Wichita, and Wichita Public Schools invite you to join them at their joint tri-governmental town hall today from 5:30 to 7:30 at the WSU Tech in Cat Building at 4004 North Webb Road. You'll hear from Sedgwick County Commission Chairman Ryan Beatty, City of Wichita Mayor Lily Wu, and the Wichita Public Schools Board President Diane Albert and other elected officials, and have the opportunity to join in group discussions about shared government services and collaboration. You can safely dispose of prescription drugs for free on National Drug Takeback Day Saturday, October 25th. Just take your medications to any of our collection sites from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., where Sedgwick County staff will be able to help assist you. The locations include the Household Hazardous Waste Facility, Oaklawn Activity Center, Sedgwick County Zoo, and the Bel Air Police Department. If you can't make it out that day, don't worry. Sedgwick County also has MedSafe boxes in several areas across the county where you can drop off unused medications. You can find one by visiting sedgewickcounty.org envirament-medsafe. Satellite locations for advanced in-person voting will open on Thursday, October 30th. You can stop in at any location and vote for the 2025 general election between 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., Thursday and Friday, and then from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Saturday. Halloween is just around the corner. Make sure your scares come from ghosts and goblins, not from accidents and injuries. Watch this video from Sedgwick County EMS, Fire District One, and the Sheriff's Office to make sure you have everything you need to stay safe for a spooktacular Halloween.
Halloween can be frightfully fun for kids of all ages, as long as your scares come from ghosts and goblins, not traffic accidents or injuries. To stay safe, follow these simple tips from Sedgwick County first responders. Make sure trick-or-treaters can see and be seen. Wear face paint instead of masks that can block your view. Dress in bright colors and use glow sticks or reflective tape to be visible after dark. Costume should also fit properly to avoid tripping. Trick or treat in areas you know, and only accept prepackaged candy. Adults should supervise, especially after dark.
Thank you for giving them candy. Appreciate it.
Put away cell phones and pay attention to your surroundings. Stay on the sidewalk and only cross at the corners, never in the middle of the road or between parked cars. Drivers should also turn on their headlights earlier than usual and slow down in neighborhoods, especially when going in and out of driveways. For more safety tips, visit Sedgwick County Fire District One's website and have a spooktacular Halloween.
Special shout-out to the sheriff for being the only adult in present at that event.
That was really good.
And that's all I have for today. I'll stand for any questions.
That was fantastic, yeah. Shout-out to the sheriff.
It worked out really well.
Questions or comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. That was a great video. I just wanted to also add, I think this came in kind of late, we do have a household hazardous waste facility, a household hazardous waste event at Spirit Aerosystems this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the intersection of MacArthur and K-15. So we're just to the east of that parking lot, P. Anyway, so I just want to make sure people are aware they have an opportunity in District Five. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder, sir.
Very good. Other questions? Nicole, thank you. Appreciate it. Great video.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Okay, we have no one that has signed up for public agenda today, so we will keep moving. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of October 1st, 2025.
Okay, Commissioners, everyone who's present for this meeting, any questions or comments on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 1st, 2025.
Second.
A motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamation. Item B, proclamation declaring disability employment awareness month.
Okay, a wonderful proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas recognition of the contributions of people with disabilities is an effective way to overcome negative stereotypes and eliminate physical and social barriers to full participation in all aspects of community life, including education, recreation, and employment. And whereas, people with disabilities are an important, vital part of our community as valued workers, civic leaders, business owners, veterans, family members, and friends, and they are innovative and valued contributors in the workplace, classroom, and community. And whereas, Sedgwick County is committed to ensuring that county programs and employment practices effectively serve and benefit people of all abilities to support individual dignity, self-reliance, and productive lives. And whereas, Sedgwick County is proud to reaffirm its commitment to supporting people with disabilities by providing opportunities and access for all. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Chairman Ryan Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Disability Employment Awareness Month, and we encourage all to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of people with disabilities all throughout our community. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. I make a motion to approve it as read.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And here to accept this proclamation on behalf of Starkey is the CEO, Colin McKinney. My friend, good to see you.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's my great pleasure to be here with you today. As you know, normally I would come to you speaking on behalf of Starkey. Today, I'm speaking to you on behalf of the extended network of stakeholders who make it possible for individuals with disabilities to find gainful employment, you know, that allows them to achieve their goals. We love the fact that Sedgwick County is such an inclusive place, but let's be honest, we want to take it to the next level as well. I did try to look up some specifics, you know, statistics that could tell us a little bit about the work that we still have to do as we're trying to make this the best place possible for people with disabilities to find the job of their dreams. And I got to tell you that the statistics were all over the page. One thing I will tell you is that as we look at the population of individuals with an identified disability, it's probably about one-third as many of those individuals find employment as members of the general population. So I'd love the proclamation. Outstanding job. I would propose that you read it each and every Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
Because we want to raise the profile of the need to place as many people with disabilities as possible in jobs that are a good fit for them. And to that end, I'd like to introduce, if I could, some members of our team who helped make that happen. We have Kelsey Stuber and Paige May, who are community employment specialists, Austin English and Brandon Butterfield with Prost Restaurant. And maybe Austin would like to come say a few words about your experience as an employer of people with disabilities at your place of business.
Wonderful. Good morning, Austin. Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Austin English. I'm the owner of Prost, German restaurant, now at 134 North St. Francis. And we have two employees that are from Starkey, the great brandini. Wave, Brandon.
Yeah.
And Kevin. And it's a real gem to have both of them. We like to contribute to our community. We're part of our community, and we plan to be active participants with Starkey in that endeavor.
Well, thank you, Austin. Appreciate that. Brandon, great job. Glad you're here today.
Yeah.
That's what we had for you today. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, I do want to take a little time here. We have one proclamation today, so I want to make sure we spend a little bit of time and really talk through some of these issues and some of these opportunities. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Jeanette, would you mind coming? I have a question for Jeanette. I did not prep her.
She thinks on her feet pretty well.
Yes. Jeanette, we do something here at Sedgwick County that we celebrate every year, and the name of the program is...
Project Search.
There you go. Could you tell the community a little bit about Project Search and why this is so valuable here for Sedgwick County?
Certainly. So Project Search is a program that matches a school district with a business to provide employment-developing internships for students with intellectual developmental disabilities in their final year of school. And so Sedgwick County, we partner with Wichita Public Schools, and we offer internships in different departments, tag office, corrections, print shop. Exploration Place has been a participant. And so they get a variety of different types of experience to determine what kind of work that they want to do. And by the end of the program, so it's a school year program, by the end of the school year, the goal is that they will find what they want to do and hopefully actually be employed by the time the program is finished.
It's a beautiful program. We celebrate that every year, but it's to the heart of what we're doing here and talking about here today is engaging those individuals in our community with intellectual developmental disabilities and engaging them in the workforce. It's a valuable opportunity in this community to really, when we talk about workforce challenges and some of the things that we're experiencing in restaurant businesses and retail here at the county, there are real opportunities to engage a population, a community here that is valuable to what we do. So I just wanted to make sure that we, and you explained it much better than I was going to be able to explain it, so Jeanette, thank you for that.
Thank you.
We appreciate all the work that's being done here. Colin, any chance I get to have this conversation with you, I take it, and I think you know it's coming. One of the biggest gaps and challenges that we have in our entire network of developmental disability is the dual-diagnosed individual, the individual that has a diagnosed mental health disorder as well as an intellectual developmental disability. You and I, since I've been on the Commission, we've been talking through this. We're getting really close to doing some things here at the county in particular and some of the pilot programs we're working on. But the biggest need, if you were to say the biggest need for serving those that are dual-diagnosed, and I'm going to ask you to speak a little bit on behalf of Starkey right here.
Sure.
How is it that we best support serving this population, this growing subset of the population that are dual-diagnosed?
It's actually very similar to what I was just talking about as it relates to employment, creating the most inclusive community we possibly can. And I've got to tell you, there are points in time where we run across barriers where the individuals we serve are not a good fit for whatever that service model is. When they are in a mental health crisis, they may not be welcome at whatever that service location is. And so, and I know Jeanette is working on it as we speak. I think there's going to be more on today's agenda related to that, but it's about breaking down those barriers. People are people, and there are differences among people, but the underlying goal is to find a place where everybody can receive the services and supports they need. And then I'm going to add on to that a little bit, maybe a little bit different than the last time you and I talked. As we look at one of the barriers that we face, it's finding the workforce that's uniquely qualified to help those individuals accomplish their goals and live productively in the community. And so we're in the process of starting a new campaign, not to reach out to anybody who may be seeking, you know, work or who could work at Starkey, but to find people who should be working at Starkey, too. They've got the heart for the work, and they want to help people accomplish their goals, and they understand that we all take steps backwards, and with help, we can take steps forwards. And so for us, we're going to be focusing more on finding just the right workforce to help all people, including those with dual diagnosis, accomplish the goals.
Well, thank you for that, and I appreciate that answer. So there's a lot that we do here in the CDDO, Developmental Disability Organization, the county, and everything that we're working on, and all of our partners from Starkey and Catch and Rainbows and all the other partners that we do. We so value the work that you do and the partnership that we have with you, and we're going to continue reinforcing a good partnership here. So congratulations on the proclamation, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, one proclamation. I do want to celebrate this proclamation, so why don't we take a five-minute break? I want to go out into the atrium here, and want to get some pictures to make sure that we can publicize all the great work that's happening in this community. Yeah, I saw it. Thank you. Okay, we're back. Thank you for giving us the quick break so we can go celebrate all the work that's being done in the Developmental Disability Organization in the community, and appreciate Colin being here today. Okay, let's keep moving. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business. Item C, 2026 Legislative Platform Adoption.
And it's Tanya Cole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. The Legislative Platform, Sedgwick County Legislative Platform, is the foundation of a focused strategy and serves as a basis for advocacy efforts to engage on critical legislative issues and specific proposals with our legislators in Topeka. It is also a reference guide for our legislative and policy positions and objectives. Before you today, we have the final draft version of our 2026 Legislative Platform, and as you're aware, we went through many revisions of this final draft. We focus our efforts on appropriations and policy issues and priorities in the coming year. The priority focus includes appropriations and policy advocacy in the County Treasurer's Office, a request to replace the Corrections Funding Formula, the Sales Tax Apportionment Distribution Formula, and moving forward in providing humane burial for the cremated remains of unclaimed individuals in our county coroner's custody. Other issues include appropriations and policy process changes for our Appraiser's Office, public services, public safety, and other county services that are important to Sedgwick County to continue and maintain the appropriate and high level of services and programs. Yesterday, we spent some time going through each specific item, and as we heard from Jason yesterday, we understand that it's going to be a short session, as the Speaker hopes to be done in March for the 2026 legislative session. So right now, I don't know, Commissioner, if you want to discuss kind of what we talked about yesterday. We talked about prioritizing some of the platform items. I know that Justin spent some time yesterday going through the platform and may want to speak to how he has already put some of those items in bill form, so I can hand it over to Justin at this point and maybe kind of discuss that.
Well, I appreciate that, Tanya. We had a robust conversation yesterday during staff meeting, and we appreciate our lobbyist, Jason Watkins, was there to help guide that conversation. We talked about prioritizing some things based on his guidance because it's a short session. We also talked about what would be written into bill form and not be written into bill form. That could be a separate conversation than what we're trying to accomplish today, but I think today we're really trying to just adopt this platform, talk about what is the priorities, and then maybe, Justin, you might be able to give us a little indication of what you're thinking on what bills need to be written and what work has already been done, maybe.
Would you like me to do that now, Chairman?
Go ahead.
Okay, certainly. Justin Waggoner, County Counselor. First off, before getting into specifics on this, I'll just point out, I'm not the attorney who's been working on all of these. In fact, other attorneys have so I can express some gratitude for work already ongoing that continues to be done by Assistant County Counselors Tom Henry, Adrian Clark, Armand Shikayev, and then Deputy County Counselor Kirk Sponsel. They've been doing the lion's share of the work on these bills. Based on conversations yesterday, from my notes, I had there were 10 different items that you all had requested bills on or that bills have already been submitted on. There's three of those that we've either finalized or they're near finalization, I mean largely drafted, the bulk have been drafted, four of them. We've begun drafting and should have done within the next week. There's two that are already pending that have been, have achieved House approval and are waiting Senate approval for the second half essentially of this legislative, it's not a session, but the second half of it, the second year of it, of this legislature. And then there's one bill that Commissioner Howell, on elections, that he intended to draft the text on and be directly in touch with the committee chair, I believe. That said, we can certainly add or subtract to the 10 items I have. I'll go through quickly. The 10 that I had down were one on tag office operations, one on facilities in terms of the changing our cap to match the state's, more or less match the state's cap on when we have to go out to public bidding on construction projects. The appraiser, there are essentially three different items on the appraiser items that we discussed in depth yesterday at the Board of County Commissioners staff meeting. Then also, there was a bill involving when juvenile corrections, people are in custody and waiting mental health evaluations to kind of match. There's some reimbursement provisions where the state will reimburse counties when people are waiting in the sheriff's offices or waiting in the jails. That bill is also one that we're looking at. We talked about having some authority for county court judges to address dangerous animals for public safety. Also, there's a forensic science center bill involving testing that Dr. Stedman had requested. There was another bill involving having publication to where counties could have the same authority the cities do in terms of potentially having publication online instead of a newspaper. I mentioned the two pending bills, one's dealing with cremains, and then there's essentially modifications proposed to Senate Bill 367 that was gained House approval last year as well. And then there's, again, elections, Bill Commissioner Howell mentioned. So those are the 10. Obviously, this is very fluid, and Chairman, you're right, whether there are other bills or the text in these bills are all things that may be discussed in more detail in the future. Just wanted to update you on that some.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you, and some of the work. And thank you to everybody in the Counselor's Office that's been working on these. We asked you to do a lot during this time, and I appreciate that you guys always rise to the occasion and knock these things out. You know, some of these discussions that we had yesterday with Jason was, you know, he was recommending that it's not practical to submit 10, 15, 20 bills. One of the things I think we could consider, and this has already happened with me on a couple of these items, is actually finding a, doing the work, writing the bill, and then finding a legislator to run the bill instead of us having to submit and us take the lead. I think some of these bills might find its place with a legislator, that we've done the work for them, the legwork for them, and then we let them take that bill and craft it as they see and then go. So I'm not intimidated by the number of bills. I think Jason was right that Sedgwick County probably should only submit a handful, but I think these are things that are all important to what we're doing, and we'll pick and choose the direction and how we do it. Any other thoughts to that? Or Tanya, any follow-up is certainly welcome. Okay. Okay, I think we had a good, robust discussion yesterday, so I think we're probably ready to adopt. If any other questions are there, I'll make a motion. Okay?
Okay. Everybody's good?
Okay. Oh, the priorities, we had talked about priorities that we were going to present. I mean, they're here on the one, two, three.
Top four.
The top three here were the big priorities that we were going to really elevate, but the rest of the platform is still going to be pushed, but these three, from the Treasurer's Office, Corrections, and Finance on the sales tax, those were going to be the top three that we're going to prioritize. Commissioner Howell?
I just wanted to just give thanks to staff. I know this has been a long process. Every year, we spend a lot of time working on Legislative Platform, and as our lobbyist told us yesterday, and he's absolutely right, we've been very successful in getting legislation to pass, and it's been a great process. The county has been very actively involved. We have a great lobbyist. We take a very active role in pushing legislation forward to help our county. I just want to say thank you to everyone involved. There's other municipalities around the state that would love to have our success record. We've been, in fact, Jason said yesterday, we almost make it look easy, but it's not easy. It's a very difficult process. And so does this represent every idea I've got? Of course not, but even though it still seems kind of long, there's still things I can say about every one of these things that I think it's a great topic, a good item of discussion. In fact, there's a couple of things on a watch list. I don't really want to spend time talking about that right now, but there's things we took off this list, moved to a watch list simply because we don't have bandwidth to deal with it this year. I think we'll have to plan on doing those maybe in the future a little bit. So some of this stuff deals with the appraiser, for example, to get our appraisals done more accurately in the state, in the state, but especially here in Sedgwick County. And so I really like this, the package of bills we're talking about. And one thing that makes me feel better about this, and again, I think the Chairman's right, by finding a legislator that's interested in this, they're by finding a legislator that's interested in this, there are ways, a lot of them are looking for things that are important. A lot of legislators don't have anything that they're necessarily connected to. I think we have opportunities to find legislators who want to take on one of these items and help them understand why it's important to Cedric County. And a lot of these things end up in different committees. And so just getting it to different committees gives us the ability to do lots of things at the same time. And I think that that's the strategy we have here is getting the bill written and through that committee process. A lot of things may not get that far, but I think just getting these things sponsored and getting them, you know, to that level is a success that I think I'm looking for so we can hopefully have hearings and testify on these bills as they come. So I expect it to be a very, very busy and active session, a very fast session, but I think we'll see something good come out of this this year. So I wanted to again say thank you to Tanya and Tom and really all of the staff and our lobbyists and really the commissioners. I think we've had really good discussion this year on our platform. So thank you, everyone involved.
Yeah, I echo that, Tanya. Thank you. I was seeing Nathaniel here from Watkins here. Thank you so much for all the work you guys do. You are, in our view, the best in Topeka at what you do, so thank you. Okay, Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to make, you know, I know we had some discussions yesterday about voting or making sure that, you know, we're all on the same page with the priorities. And while I agree with the top three that we've got on there, is it possible to include the appraiser office issues as well on the top priorities? Just wanted to kind of feel everybody out.
Commissioner Meitzner, have some thoughts there, too? Go ahead.
Well, yeah. I know we all agreed yesterday to also submit a prioritization. So I'm not surprised that these three, I mean, I totally advocated for the legislative priorities. In looking at the document, we have had great discussions about the appraiser's office. And the document looks like the appraiser's office bullets are kind of buried in the middle of others, almost the watch list kind of environment. I love the idea of watch list, so I don't know if somehow we can get the appraiser's office maybe as a sub priority or something. I don't know.
It's under policy. It's just under alphabetical order, I think.
Right.
That's why it's buried.
Right.
And we should prioritize these the way the commission wants. If I, just think about the last six months, the appraiser has been talked about a lot. The tag office has been talked a lot. So I think that somewhere in this mix, as we go back to and finalize this and we talk to our lobbyists, that somehow those two items are addressed by this commission. I think the public is expecting that. The top three priorities, I'm fine with, but can we not add a four and five?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I don't think there's any problem with adding a fourth top priority, and I think we all think the appraiser's office is, there's no hard or fast rule as to why we're keeping the top legislative priorities as just these three. I think we could expand it if we think that's it. Commissioner Howell?
I'd actually say it slightly differently. I'd like to have four number one priorities. Because even between the top three, it's not one, two, and three, as if three's not as important as number one.
Right.
I have three number one priorities, and we add a fourth. I agree with Commissioner Bluebaugh, the appraiser's office, those three bullets.
Yeah.
Collectively, comprehensively becomes a fourth number one priority. So we have four number one priorities, as I see this.
I would agree with that totally. Commissioner Wise?
Yes, I was going to say the same thing. The appraiser office is not a number four, but I think it's a fourth number one. All of these issues have to do with property taxes and all of the pressure that we feel for all of our constituents. And then corrections is just what we're experiencing as a community, and we need to make sure that we fight for that as well. So I would think we should put the appraiser up towards the front. I think we're really realistic on what we're asking on that. We were able to get it really honed in on specifics. So if we can add that there, I don't have any other changes. Those were the four that I wanted to focus on, on priorities.
Yeah, I would agree. So we all kind of in favor of moving that, it's on the legislative platform, but making this one of the top four legislative priorities that we're working through?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we have consensus there.
I agree.
That's okay with you, and it, Justin, that we have consensus on that?
Certainly.
No?
I think you just put it in your motion, and it'd be just fine if it gets to that point in the motion.
Okay.
To adopt, yeah.
Okay. Tanya, anything else?
No, sir. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, let me see if I can craft a motion that works here. Okay, I move to approve the 2026 Legislative Platform adoption as read and with the exception of moving the appraiser office items under policy into our top legislative priority category. Clerk, did you get that? He did, because he seconded it, so. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions or anything? I think we're good. Go ahead and call the vote.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Thank you again. Yeah, very good. We really appreciate all the work. Okay, on we go. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Hey, Tom.
Chairman and Commissioner, good morning. Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items D through N on regular agenda today.
Okay, we've all been briefed and talked through consent agenda. I am just going to pull one item off, consent agenda, just for discussion. I'm going to ask Tim or Jeanette to be able to discuss item I. And I'm absolutely going to support it, but I'd love the community to understand what's going on in item I. So any questions or comments on the rest of the consent agenda? Okay, I make a motion to approve consent agenda items D through N with the exception of item I.
Second.
Make a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Tom, could you maybe lead us into what item I is? And we'll invite Jeanette up to explain it.
For the public, item I is in agreement with the National Center for Start Services for Training and Consultation Services. And this is what the chairman and we talked about during the proclamation a bit, there's a component to this. We have two experts in the room, and Jeanette is already at the podium, so let's let her go first, and then maybe Tim would want to chime in as well.
Okay, yeah, Jeanette, welcome. Thank you, appreciate it. Can you tell us what we're doing here in item I and why it's important?
Certainly. So in '24, we did a study of our mental health system and how well it works for folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The National Center for Start Services conducted that evaluation, utilized a lot of different data, and we that have worked in the system knew the thin result, but we didn't know the cost to our community of not appropriately addressing folks with co-occurring mental health issues with intellectual developmental disabilities. You know, folks that are in mental health crisis with ADD that go to the emergency room have a 74% recidivism rate, so they come back 74% of the time. We had 400 police calls to ADD sites in one year. We had one group home that had 80, 80 police calls in one year. These are all symptoms that the current system is not working for folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. You know, it's a small subset of the folks with mental illness, but they can have a big impact. And the National Center for Start Services has an evidence-based program that's been implemented in about, I think it was 22 other states to help address these exact issues. So they have data to show the reduction in emergency room visits, the reduction in inpatient hospitalizations, reductions in law enforcement responses if we can address this situation well. So that's why we're going forward with the contract with the National Center for Start Services.
Yeah, and is this, is this training that we're, is this a training curriculum mostly, or what is it exactly that Start Services does?
Well, it's an evidence-based model approach. And so the National Center for Start Services has the tools to be used, the assessments, all the research basis on how to interact with this population. And what they do is, yes, they'll carry a caseload to actually work with individuals with the co-occurring, but they also do a lot of work in the community with the institutions that are not functioning well for folks with the co-occurring, to work with them, to how you can work with this population better, what needs to happen, developing resources that don't exist, and developing linkage agreements so that we can all partner to actually get the results that we all, we all would like to see for this population.
Well, this is a big deal. I'm a big advocate for the Start Services and this model here, and I think K Dad's publicly for some partnership there and helping us to get this off the ground. When we talked to Colin McKinney with Starkey three years ago, when he came in my office when I first got on the commission, he talked about this need that we have to have some sort of plan and strategy for those that are experiencing dual diagnosis, and they have an intellectual or developmental disability with a mental health disorder, diet, mental health disorder. And some of the challenges, Starkey would look sometimes to Calm Care and say, hey, we do ADD, but we don't do mental health. And mental health would look to Starkey and say, hey, we do mental health, but we don't do ADD, and there is this gap. And many times, individuals like Starkey catch, they would say, hey, we want these individuals in our program. But there's times that we need a respite, there's times we need support to maybe stabilize some behaviors and outbursts. And not just an outburst of behavior, but also clinical depression and some of the other things that really have a growing, this is a growing subset in this population. So I'm so in favor of this. I thank you for your leadership, Tim. Thank you for your leadership on this and the work that's being done here. I'm really excited to see this get some traction here in this community. So thanks for taking time to explain this.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. Okay, any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve item I on the consent agenda.
A second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay, very good. Next item, please.
Federal grants discussion.
Nothing for this one.
We have nothing on the federal grants discussion. Obviously, the discussion around WIC is ongoing. We're getting updates as we go, and then we'll just wait and continue to get updates from staff as we get more information. Okay, next item, please.
Committee reports.
Okay, Commissioners, any committee reports you'd like to share with the public? Okay, seeing none, we keep moving.
Other?
Okay, anything under other? Commissioner Meitzner?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And a little point of privilege here, I don't want to catch us off guard, but we have just a second. I see Treasurer Brandy Bailey in the audience, and we just had our Citizens Advisory Board meeting this week, and she presented and gave our Citizens Advisory Board an update of little history, but mainly the current status. And so if privy, if it will allow, I'd like to ask Brandy to come up and kind of give us an update on what's going on in the tag office world.
Great idea, great idea.
Is that all right?
Brandy, welcome.
Thank you. A little off guard, but we'll wing this. So we officially merged last Tuesday. That was our first day. Had a couple little challenges, but got through that. And I will tell you, we have been in the office every morning since we've opened last Tuesday as the combined office. And it is amazing to see all stations staffed, and those stations staffed pretty much throughout the entire day. Right before we opened, we were seeing lines of 150, 200 people outside the doors before we opened the doors in the morning. Yesterday and this morning, we had maybe 35. People are getting in the lines, they're getting in the queues. The appointment time's being expanded out further, has allowed more people the ability to get those appointments. The additions of the two satellite locations has allowed us to put those people in places. So it's working, and it's good. And like I said, we have been in the office every morning, probably most mornings, all day long until noon, 11 o'clock, noon, and the positive feedback we're getting from this, it's impressive. And the community, I think, are realizing that those stations being staffed, it's truly going to work. And so I just wanted to share that it's going well, and we're seeing good things already. I know there's a lot of, lot of talk out there about, I forgot about the east side on the satellite locations. I haven't forgot about the east side. I am working with east side locations. I do have a secured location. Today, my team is going out there to meet with their IT team to make sure our stuff is going to work and test it for a second. So as soon as I get that it's working, we will know. I'm hoping to go live in that location on November 3rd. And as soon as I know that everything's working and I can meet that date, then I will announce officially where it's going. But I do have a location on the east side picked out.
Brandy, thank you. And I don't know about the rest of us, but the volume of complaints or emails and comments is reduced dramatically to, I think, all of us, and you too, manager, Mr. Manager. So I think, I wish that, probably can't do it, but I wish that the media would do a follow-up because they really helped elevate the problem. And now I think it's, it appears to be pretty calm and under control and impressive, but I thought, thank you for giving us an update.
There's been a couple days that we did have a couple little technology hiccups, but we got through it, and it's, we're doing great. And, you know, yesterday, yesterday at 3:00 in the afternoon, we had a queue line still of 145 people in queue. The office was stressing about how we're going to make this, but at 4:44, everybody was cleared out of the queue.
That's great.
Well, and we were made aware that Johnson County, you know, Kansas City had the results of the down, the server being down statewide, and they were catching a lot of grief, too. So I think our population centers of Wichita area, Cedric, and Johnson, we definitely fell a brunt when the server goes down. And I think we've got some information from that meeting we had with Department of Revenue, was it Department of Revenue? Yeah, so they've sent us some information, and hopefully our crack IT group can help resolve, you know, improve our, we're taking on the burden, some of this locally to help make your life easier and actually make the citizens' lives easier, so.
That was kind of exciting to come in and see an email that we received some data from the state to help us with that calculator, to help us with the motor vehicle calculation of the fee. So that was nice. You mentioned that, you know, the media has helped raise the level of the negatives. Well, this morning, I did go set on KSN LiveSpot, and we talked about it a little bit, and then I'll do KWCH and CAKE tomorrow, so they're getting me on there so that way we can talk about how we are seeing improvements.
Yeah.
So that's out there.
Steve and Ted, Steve Rick.
Yeah, Steve and Ted also.
Oh, yeah, I did do Steve and Ted, and that, I think, aired Sunday.
Okay, well, Brandy, thank you, and to your staff. We met the tag office staff last week after the Employee Recognition Awards and was able to encourage them and get some feedback from them. This plan, this strategy, it's still in its infancy, but so far, so good, so.
So far, so good.
Yeah.
And I tell you, you guys meeting with my staff on Columbus Day, thank you. They truly appreciated that, and they felt like they were seen, and they were actually, they were cared for. So that was, that was huge to them, so we do appreciate that.
Appreciate that, yeah, appreciate that. Okay, Brandy, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay.
Thank you for letting us.
Anything else under other? We mentioned it this morning in the community announcements, but just a reminder that this evening, starting at 5:30, 5:30 to 7:30, we have the tri-government town hall. This is the fulfillment of a promise that we made at an en banc, that we would have an opportunity for the community to come in and provide feedback on all the things that we've been discussing. It really is not more complicated than that. This is just a town hall to where you're going to have electeds from the city of Wichita, Cedric County Government, and USD 259 school board in one room to just hear feedback and to dialogue and to engage. The heart of a town hall is engagement, and we wanted to be able to provide a space for that. So that's at 5:30 at NCAT today. You can go to our social media and see all the details on that. Okay, anything else under other? Okay, seeing none, next item.
Executive session.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do have an executive session proposed. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 20 minutes until 10:05 a.m. for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of land for use by county departments, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room executive session at 10:05 a.m.
Okay, that's a motion. I'll second it. Okay, that's a motion. I'll second it. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Booba?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay, we'll be back 10:05. Stay tuned. And we're going. Okay, we are back from executive session. There was no binding action taken today during executive session. Anything else that needs to happen before we adjourn? In one hour and five minutes. Okay, I think we're good. We are adjourned.